During public period. And there's two minutes. There's two minutes to be. Other than that, on both sides. And we can report, right? Public meeting with that.
Yeah.
Cannot speak unless. Okay, the time. The meeting starts.
What do you?
Initiation. Replace this first.
Uh, well.
And the page will be saw in one minute.
I'll have it down. Good evening, uh, welcome to the June fifth, twenty twenty-three. Council work session meeting for the town of Forest Heights. The time is seven thirty. This meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Present. Council member Noble here. Council member Brownson.
Brownson here.
Council member McDonald.
President.
Mary Emily.
President. Uh, next who will have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Next, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
I move that we approve the consent agenda for tonight. Is there a second?
A second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt the consent agenda for this evening. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Brownson, uh, what change would you like to make to the consent agenda for tonight?
The minutes have in, in some inaccurate data in them. So I, I mean, I don't, I didn't want to go through all of the mint notes to make these changes. So when we approve globally, we're saving things in there of correct.
Yes, but if there's something that needs to be amended, uh, you can move to amend uh, and make the changes. So if you'd like to do that, please do so now.
Okay, so should I go minute by minute? We have a lot of.
Well, the minutes are a summary of the proceedings from the previous meeting. They're not a dictation. So if the meeting minutes accurately depict what was discussed at the meeting, then uh, we won't make a change, but if there's something substantive that you'd like to change, uh, you can amend, make that amendment now.
The minutes from Wednesday. No, I have. The minutes from May seventeenth, um, the public hearing is. That, 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 four minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Agenda, it says approval of agenda motion by Mayor Washington. And he wasn't here at that time. May seventeen, six P M, the public hearing.
Is it May tenth?
May seventeen.
And May tenth is the.
I'm sorry.
May tenth is.
And May tenth as well, yeah. And May seventeen.
May seventeen.
But that's one thing. Um. And some of the, that circle some of the, they've noticed because the compass, it's like a conversation in the notes and that it doesn't say where one person spoke and another person spoke is just a ongoing conversation, especially, I'll pay attention to the ones that have my name on it specifically. And um, this one is. May seventeen, which is a lot, anyway. I mean, it's a lot and it's for this to be a summary. It's a lot in a summary. I mean, this is not a summary. Um. For on page thirteen of the minutes from May seventeen. It has the conversation between um O'Kara and myself. And it doesn't say where I stopped the question he, and he said comments. It's just like, I said all this. So it's, it's a lot in here that to this. It, it's not a summary. Um, so. I don't know. This is. A lot of stuff. It's not a summary. It seems to be just a, a typing of the the, the, the recording.
Okay, well, uh, I would suggest that we can uh talk about maybe what changes, changes might be made to the minutes. I'll have to review and see if it uh, you know, rises to the level of making changes, but I think that for now we should uh, have your amendment presented to remove Mayor Washington and, and uh is making the motion on the meetings for March, May tenth and May seventeen.
Well, I can't, I mean, those are some of the ones I noticed in, in May seventeen, but I can't.
Well, uh, Councilmember Brownson, if you would like to make a motion to amend portions of the minutes, you can do that.
I can just, ma'am. Changing the designs and stuff like that. And then the conversation that was on May seventeen between myself and O'Kara, it seems like the, the notes, they say that I, it wasn't, I stated all of this long paragraph, but it was a conversation. So he said something, I said something, but it's not um separated on what he said versus what I said. And that's in a lot of the notes here where the conversation was just continuous without indicating which person spoke.
Okay.
So I don't know how to fix that.
Well, uh, I think that the extent to which you'd like to amend the minutes, uh, amend the minute, minutes requires a deeper conversation. We can amend portions of uh substantive issues now if you would like. And I think if you want to make the motion on the first item, the formal motion, have you declared a formal motion that you're gonna, that you're gonna move on?
Uh, yeah, I make a motion that it be amended to, uh, to reflect that the minutes from May tenth and May seventeenth indicate that Mayor Washington um, name be stricken because he wasn't even in this meeting. And I also make a motion that the minutes depict the conversation of who said what. Uh, but, but specifically for the May seventeen minutes. Um, and then if the minutes are going to be a summary, that they be a summary. It's, it's a, I mean, it's just pages and pages of minutes and it's not a summary.
Uh, so that would be one motion.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Um, excuse me. On May first, where, you know, they took the, the roll call for, you know, whether, you know, we're gonna accept Mayor Washington's resignation.
Yes, ma'am.
It wasn't right. And I just wanted to be known that I did say no. And it doesn't say no. It says, um, five yeses and it says, um, one abstain.
Okay, well, uh, so uh, we have a motion on the floor, so let's let's uh, there's, it's been emotions presented that we amend the minutes for May seventeen and May tenth, removing Mayor Washington and inserting Mayor Lilly and acting Mayor Lilly and I need something specific in order to, to move the other sections. I can't. We're not gonna be making a change to it. So I think we should amend the items you've brought up so far. So there's an amendment on the floor to remove Mayor Washington and insert acting Mayor Lilly for the meeting minutes on May tenth and May seventeen. Is there a second?
On May seventeenth, where the conversation on page on page thirteen of the minutes on page, on May seventeen. The conversation between the um Mr. O'Kara and myself, it's, it seems that still, it's not broken out by what I said versus what Mr. O'Kara said. It's almost saying Councilmember Brownson.
Can I ask a question? It was, it, is it in order?
We uh, have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I make a second.
It has been moved and seconded that we amend the minutes for May tenth and May seventeenth, striking Mayor Washington's name and inserting acting Mayor, Mayor Lilly. All in favor, signify by saying aye. I'm so. This is a, this is a, we're just doing a, um. No, the more, the, we've already discussed the, uh, motion.
It was made and it was not open for discussion.
I'm sorry, discussion. Forgive me, I'm sorry.
So my question to Ms. Brownson is, is it contextual? Because it is a lot of language and I agree with you on that. But is it contextual that you have an issue in terms of the formatting and that kind of thing, or are there actual errors?
Well, there are actual errors and two of them I pointed out with the names not being correct. And then i- if you go through some of the minutes, you'll notice that it has Mayor Lilly sometimes and it has acting. So those type things, they are errors.
But those are contextual. So if we're amending or making a motion to amend the minutes for context, I'm not sure that that's something that we would, I mean, we're going through the whole, all of this because we're saying that they're contextual uh, concerns versus errors, or you said something that was not appropriately recorded or that kind of thing, then yeah, I could see us making a motion to um amend the content, but that's not what I'm receiving. I'm receiving that it's just contextual edits, errors, that kind of thing.
That, that, and the conversations are not state, as stated on, as reported. So you can say both were contextual and errors, yes.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Agenda is adopted as amended. Consent agenda is adopted as amended. Councilmember Hines.
Yes. So I should make my motion?
Yes.
Um, I would like to make a motion that it just be corrected for May first, where May's Mayor Washington or where we took the vote. And it came back five yes. One abstain, and it doesn't say anything about the one no. I would just like to revise my no, put my no, make sure that it's noted. And I said no.
Okay, this is on May first?
Yes.
It says. Can you show me uh, where it has it reported? Just wanna make sure I see it. Madam Clerk.
Oh, it's on public period?
Okay, under public period, I see five yes, one abstain. Um, I point of order, I'd like to c- correct what I just said. We did not approve the consent agenda. We approved the motion to amend the minutes for May tenth and May seventeenth. Okay, uh, Councilmember Hines, would you like to make a motion that we amend?
Yeah, I would like to.
Uh, this is the minutes for May first.
Yes, make a motion that um, the minutes from May first be amended from five yes, just to implement my one no. That's all.
Me, I need everyone to unmute themselves. Oh, Councilmembers, as you're speaking, if uh, you're speaking at that time, please unmute your mic so you can be heard for those who are online as well.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that on May first minutes where we took the we took the count for um, to accept Mayor Washington's resignation or to resign. It says um, five yes, one abstain, and it doesn't recognize my one no. It was a no there. So I just wanna put that on record. That was, that's what happened. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I said, I second.
It has been moved and seconded that we amend the meeting minutes for May first, twenty twenty-three, to reflect that Councilmember Hines voted no uh, on the most, on the legislation to accept Mayor Washington's resignation. So the minute should read for the vote, four yes, one no, one abstain. Any discussion? Councilmember Noble.
Yes, just to, that it's recorded under public period as well as on page two. Uh. May first. I just saw it, but it's here, it's in two places for May one.
Is there any other discussion?
That's what I'm saying.
Hearing none. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion uh, passes. So we now need to uh, vote to adopt the consent agenda. I move that we adopt tonight's consent agenda.
That's the question before we adopt it. So we adopting as amended or if we gonna um, uh, adopted after it has been amended? So we can see that it was amended.
Well, we voted on an amendment to the first set of meeting minutes and we uh, just voted on the second set of, of minutes, so it's voting as amended.
A voting as amended.
So I move that we adopt the consent agenda as amended.
I second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we will have uh, the approval of our main agenda. I move that we approve our main agenda for tonight.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the main agenda for this evening. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we will have uh, the swearing in of Miss Elaine Pippins to the Board of Elections. Sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry. Um. I move that we amend the main agenda. Uh, the, the presentation from Dr. Lisa Grillo and Miss Erica Borsico is not gonna happen. I believe Clerk received the call that they're not gonna be able to make it tonight. So I move that we amend tonight's agenda, striking the presentation from Dr. Grillo and Miss Erica Borsico from Elizabethston High School. Is there a second?
A second.
It has been moved and seconded that we uh, amend tonight's main agenda, removing the presentation from Dr. Lisa Grillo and Miss Erica Borsico. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So at this time, we will have the swearing in of Miss Elaine Pippins to the Boards of Elections. Miss Pippins, please step forward.
Question about the swearing in of Miss Pippin. Is she replacing one of the Board of Education's persons from last season?
Yes, she is. Yes. One of the members resigned and so Miss Elaine Pippins is uh, replacing that member.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, I read the, it says that in the best interest of the town due to the pending election to immediately confirm and appoint three members of the board and an alternate. So do we have an alternate or she, or will she be number three or how does that work?
Hold on just a minute, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are you going to respond to that? Yes, please, if you had something to add. Thank you. So the person who was uh, appointed as an alternate prior, that person will remain as an an alternate.
Yes, we don't have. That's the job left it um, at the last meeting. Um, the last resolution was not a requirement for that special election that we had. You never watch.
So my question then is, do we have an alternate? The answer is no, right? Okay, so can we at the soonest date possible, uh, find an alternate and swear them in? Because according to the the charter, we need to have four. Okay. Thank you for your patience, Miss Pippins. Miss Pippins. Uh, please repeat after me. I
Aye.
State your name.
Elaine Pippins.
Do swear that I will.
Do swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will.
And I will.
Bear faithful, be faithful and bear true allegiance.
Be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
Laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligent and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
The Board of Election for the Town of Forest Heights.
The Board of Election for the Town of Forest Heights.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
And the laws of the state.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we have, next, we have uh, reports for this month. We have a report from the Department of Public Works. Are there any questions from uh, the council? On the report for, from the Department of Public Works this month?
Oh, yeah. I did have one question about the report and just the setup. I noticed that the um, the workers, the, the, what's it, the columns that you have, um, you have work type, who's performing the work? And all you have is your name and uh, Melvin Watkins. So is that saying that the rest of the public works people are not performing work or you summarize their work under your work?
May I respond?
Mister uh, Bell Navis, yes, you can respond, sir.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for that question, Councilmember. The, the statement that was made under the report, I used uh, Melvin Watkins uh, name, but it should have been um, Public Works. So you're, you're correct. Um, I used his name as the, the over, since he is the lead. Um, and he would be passing the work on to the Public Works Department.
Okay, so I, I see, I understand that, but so when it comes time to evaluation, evaluating the employees, can you use this document as to what each employee has done?
Uh, yes, ma'am. The, the actual report, um, if you, if you're looking at the, um, I don't have it in front of me, um. What it actually does is it gives a statement of what the employees have done throughout the day, and I understand you want to be able to see which employees is doing what, correct?
No, it's not what I want. I was just asking a question about when, when you assign the person assigned to, um, who you assign it to and o- other people being assigned work, because looking at this, it only looks like two people are being assigned work.
I understand.
If I might add a point there, it, I'm looking at the report, it says entered by, I don't know, Mister Bell Navis, does that mean that uh, the person who entered is the person who did the work or that they are the person who entered the, the work into the report in the system?
It is the person that's in entered the, the, the actual work into the system. Um, Mister Watkins um, would um, supply the, he would send it to me in an email and then I would upload it to the system. I'm, I'm in the process of learning that system. And so if it, if it seems as if it's um, incorrect, it is because the the way I, I placed it in Public Works, I gave it to Mister, I, I use Mister Wa- Mister Melvin Watkins' name instead of Public Works. And there is a column there for Public Works. Some of them you would see Public Works, but I was um, learning the system at the time.
Any other questions, um, Councilmember Rossen? Councilmember Noble, you recognized?
I just wanted to make the comment on the report that it's very detailed and I can appreciate that. And I guess for me, my understanding entered by was just for tracking purposes, not so much who was doing what work. Or but for tracking purposes for Public Works. So I, again, I want to thank you for your report and just the photos that go with it. Thank you.
Any other questions on the report for the Department of Public Works?
I just wanted to make the comment. I wasn't questioning the entered by, it was the assigned to column that I was referring to, not the entered by.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Bronson for that correction. Next, we will have uh, the Code Enforcement the Code Enforcement Division in their report. Are there any questions for Code Enforcement's report for this month? Hearing none. We'll move to the next report, uh, the ARPA Project Manager Report. Is Mr. O'Connor online this evening?
Hi, I'm Mr. Mayor.
Mr. O'Connor, thanks for being here tonight. Uh, I was wondering if you could talk about, um, one of the items that came up in the last meeting that we had where a resident addressed a concern about a, uh, speed hump project that was petitioned by residents, uh, in some years past, and, um, obviously those speed humps were not constructed. But could you just give us an update on what you've learned and what information you gathered since that meeting?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. So I did go back and, and do some research on the, uh, the speed humps. Uh, apparently that was something that was held within the, I, I would say two previous ago, Department of Public Works, um, directors. But unfortunately, uh, there was no movement forward on that. However, uh, what I did do is, uh, I went out and I, I did go out on, on Delaware. I did, uh, take a look at the location, spoke to the town administrator, chief of police. And of course, the mayor and council, uh, did put a new ordinance in place related to the speed humps for a very good and solid reason, which was for uniformity, as there were speed bumps and speed humps, um, all over the jurisdiction. Um, with that being said, the, uh, right now, the process for that ordinance is, is underway. I spoke to the town administrator and the, uh, police chief, and they are deploying a, uh, a unit, uh, the Black Cat Unit in order to get the speeds on that road to see if the, uh, uh, a speed hump is actually necessary. And in preparation for that, I also, uh, already found the location that speed humps would be viable for, should it meets the criteria set in the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. And yeah, just to add further to what, uh, Mr. O'Connor said, there's a process by which there's, uh, an engineering and also a feasibility review, uh, prior to the speed hump being implemented. So we're in those phases of, uh, reviewing, and the council will take those recommendations and can make a decision at a later date if that's a proper place and, uh, if we decide the expense funds to, to do the speed home project. So thank you for that update, Mr. O'Connor. Anyone else have questions for the ARPA Project Manager Report this month?
I do.
Councilmember Bronson?
Yes, I have a question about item number five, which is the Black Hawk Lane, um, uh, grant funding. Um, and you, uh, I just want to know, is there a target date of when you will be notified if you receive this grant?
Yes. Mr. Mr. O'Connor, uh, there's a question from Councilmember Bronson on the grant. Could you answer that, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in fact, uh, I'm hoping that within the next ninety days, we'll be notified. The last status update I have from the congressman's office is that it has gone to the floor for funding, uh, in the particular appropriations committee. Uh, again, we did put in for three point five million dollars on that project. I'm anticipating, um, a possible award of one point seven five million. But of course, uh, it, it is sitting in the federal government level right now, and we do know the, the wheels turn slow up there. I am in constant contact, and I know that Mayor Lilly, uh, is, uh, has a point of contact there as well as he did bring this particular grant to my attention. So it'll be a team effort. Um, I wish I had better news and a hard date for you, but I hope that, uh, you know, in ninety days after, uh, they get through their budget, budget, that, um, we'll be able to, uh, go ahead and get you an answer.
Okay, and I have one more question. Um, item number six, the community garden. Where do we stand with that?
Councilmember Bronson, could you, uh, just pull your microphone closer to yourself so make sure everyone can hear you? Thank you.
Did you hear my question, Mr. O'Connor?
I did, the community garden. Um, so right now, the permit is, we're waiting on WSSC to come out and do the inspection in order to
Do they give you a target time? I mean, it seems like every meeting we're waiting on WSSC. Um, so it's been months. Is there, you know, do you have any idea what's the process and why it's taking, because they, they do, they will give you a status update on when they expect it time, won't they?
Yes, and I spoke to the contractor and they did reach out to WSSC with their plumber, and they said that they will update them when it gets in the queue for inspection. Unfortunately, um, with these permits, you know, we're, we're held at the behest of WSSC. And I think the mayor and council all know that this project had been on the books for many, many years with no traction, and I was able to, uh, get it moving with the help of staff. And from point A to point B, um, it's been a very short time that we've been able to get to the point that we're at now and make a lot of progress. Um, we stay on top of WSSC, and as soon as we get an update from them, I will immediately contact the town administrator, uh, so the work can begin.
So right now, there's no activity in the community garden? Because we haven't had water for a long time, but right now there's no activity in, in the community garden?
Well, there, from citizens, there can be activity in the community garden. It's not blocked off. They can do whatever they need to do that they've done traditionally. Um, as far as construction activity, the only activity we've had was the first portion that was approved by WSSC, which was the tap line, which was constructed into the road and ran to the side. Uh, so that's what we have now, which is actually a, a milestone in the project, because that was the hardest part to get approved.
Okay, so I, I, I'm trying to get back to the time where we first talked about, and you say that, um, the, Ms. Kathy was saying that, you know, we need to get plants watered there so we can plant, and and that was back in like the early part of March, but this seems like nothing has happened. There's, doesn't appear, I walked by the other day, doesn't seem like there's no planting of seeds, no digging or anything.
Um, well, I, I think, um, could I ask a question? Is, is someone to have actual, uh, knowledge of what the status of the garden is? Have they grown anything for this year? I'm not aware. Councilmember Noble.
I'm sorry. Um, at, at this point, the garden is inactive. And because I guess from the main two garden growers, um, they were waiting for the water, so it's inactive right now. No one's doing anything in the garden.
Thank you, Councilmember Noble.
That's what I was trying to get at. What's the status of?
So if I could, Mr. O'Connor, uh, the next time that you reach out to WSSC, if you could do so in writing, and when you receive the response with an updated timeline or whatever the, the new information is, if you could copy the council, would blind copy the council, so it's not, uh, so we each receive the email individually, but so that all council members are updated. If you could take a note, and please do that, we greatly appreciate that.
Yes, absolutely, I will. And, uh, I, I do check weekly with the contractors as to the status with WSSC. Um, so I will, uh, rather than send you weekly emails, if, if you so choose, I'll continue to update the town administrator and, um, uh, send you a overall update if, if that works.
Well, if the next time you have an update, the substantive that either has a new date or, uh, timeline, if you could send that. Uh, I'd like to see if we can get an update. It might be before the next meeting, so, uh, we'll know if we need to apply additional pressure on the project. Any other questions for the, uh, ARPA Project Managers Report this month?
Yes, I have a question. Uh, according to number eight, the, um, scope of work that's being, um, drafted or was drafted for fifty-seven hundred block of Arapahoe Drive, and the proposals for construction were due May thirty-first by five P M. Was that satisfied?
Yes, uh, not only was it satisfied, it was sent to the town administrator. I did have a brief meeting uh, with Mayor Lilly about the scope of work, and I spoke with the Department of Public Works. And, uh, there is a resolution that has been drafted and pending uh, for placement onto the agenda, uh, when, uh, the town administrator and everybody agrees that it is, uh, the time to get it going from there. Funding sources have also been, uh, preliminarily identified.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the ARPA Project Manager Report? Hearing them, we'll move to the next item, uh, Youth and Community Outreach Bureau Report. Are there any questions for this report this month? Councilmember McDonald?
The May Youth Community Engagement is what you said? Did you say?
Yes, the Youth and Community Engagement.
Yeah, I have one question about the, um, I guess the mahogany bookstore. So we, it looks like the town would become, would be fronting a fifteen hu hundred dollar budget for the bookstore, was it for the, uh, I guess campaign that they had for the book club happy hour? Just trying to
Mr. Uh, Mr. Um, Holland, could you speak to that, please?
Hi, so, uh, with the District Eight Team, they proposed to start supporting local black owned businesses and the fifteen hundred dollars with stuff front for the free books that we were offering the citizens of District Eight, and then that was only supposed to be going to the first book of each participant and the, uh, bookstore happy hour. If, is that what the question was? What the fifteen hundred dollars with support?
Mm-huh.
So we support the free books that we would give out to our resident, one free book per person. Um, in the report, it states that after the first free book, that all participants will be paying for their own book. So essentially what we're trying to do is one, expand the personal libraries of the citizens of the town by also, uh, provide a funding for a black owned business in our area.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
What's your name again?
Keith Holland.
Okay.
Mr. Keith Holland, uh, our youth coordinator.
Uh, I met you a few months ago, ma'am.
I would say have been introduced to the council as the, uh, youth person.
Uh, I spoke to everyone last meeting, but I don't think I've gotten a formal introduction on the agenda as of yet.
Right.
Well, we'll make sure that happens. Thank you.
I remember you with the cap.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for this report? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the next, uh, the Police Department report. Any questions for this report? Hearing none, we'll move to the next one. Uh, Mr. Town Administrator, did you have any, uh, updates that you wanted to provide for the this month?
Uh, yes, sir. Council, I apologize. My report will be emailed to you, uh, in the morning, kind of inundated with the budget presentation the last few days. Um, the only updates that I have, uh, is that the A R A P positions were posted, uh, through our new A D P H R service. We have about thirty-five applications that we're gonna start sifting through, um, the system rates, the candidates. So we'll start with the highly qualified ones first. Um, those will go to Mr. McKenzie, the treasurer uh, to do phone screenings, and then we'll set up, um, interviews. We also considered for the A P position, uh, for the person to sit in an interview before the finance committee. Um, just so that there's another level of vetting, um, but we're still working out those details as well. Um, and the staff assistant position for the front office or administrative assistant has been posted. That has over fifty applications, uh, but most of them are lowly qualified. So we're waiting for a few more to come in before we close it, and then we'll begin vetting those as well. The other updates I have is you'll notice under legislation, this month, there are quite a few budget amendments. Um, some will probably make your head spin, but I've been trying to get a pulse on all of the open grants that we have for the government for the last uh, couple of weeks, and these are all grants that were accepted by the council for the town. However, the official budget amendments were never done, and I'm unable to seek reimbursement. Uh, so the legislation is before you. That's one of the other things I've been working on all weekend. Uh, I need to get our money back from all of these different entities, uh, to put back into the general fund, because we have been essentially fronting that money. Um, we're at the end of the F Y. So that is what I've been mainly working on personnel matters and trying to get this funding back from all these different entities.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the acting town administrator? All right, hearing none. Uh, next we'll have public period. Are there any members of, uh, the public that would like to speak in the auditorium?
Yes, sir. We have Ms. Elaine Pippen. Oh, okay. We have Ms. Andrea McCutcheon.
Ms. McCutcheon, please come forward. If you could state your name and, uh, your street, the street that you live on, and you'll have two minutes, uh, to speak. Thank you for being here tonight.
My name is Andrea McCutcheon. I live at one three seven seventh drive, which is right next to where Clint, your former councilman, lived. Uh, one three five seventh drive. I have a whole bunch of problems um, with a whole bunch of things, and it's hard to even start. The first thing that, um, had happened, it drew my attention to, um, I had an incident happen first thing at my home. It drew my attention to you guys because I hadn't been being bothered. But at any rate, I noticed that when Clint was in the hospital, you guys never filled his council seat as you should have. When, uh, John Kennedy ran and won, you knew Clint wasn't up here, and you continued for a whole year without pulling that board to Vegas. And that's a problem because Charles didn't should The other thing, um, I have is that, uh, it, it, uh, it appears that allegedly Washington was kicked out of this house whenever, and you guys moved that too, and you allowed him to run for office and be approved, and that's a problem. Because he didn't live in the town. And then instead of here, just like he just gave his old office, everybody here is in all office, all of you, and no one's invited by your own office. You know what I'm saying? So I don't understand that either. And the other thing, um, is, uh, I don't know where to start first. And so at any rate, when Washington did resign, I, he did it in the twelfth hour, and you waited a whole two weeks to even implement like should have been done that night, who's gonna resign? There should have been a resolution there to immediately transfer, and you were talking about he's worked here twenty years and having a partner. That's not true at all. You know, and I'm getting where it's a lot of lies, lying going on, and there's a lot of confidential information being disseminated. And to, to complaints that are being made, like myself specifically, you have your code enforcement officer, and my name is not around town, but people knowing my business as far as, and not knowing me having any general orders and knowing how to serve a kick out order, and also with my latest form of code enforcement. Uh, this one, uh, the town administrator told me today that, uh, he threatened me that I needed to run for mayor, vote in court, or leave town.
Ms. McCutcheon, thank you for your comments. Your time's concluded, but please feel free to send, uh, any other comments that you weren't able to complete tonight, uh, to, to myself and the council. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the auditorium who would like to speak this evening? Is there anyone online who would like to provide public comment this evening? Okay, hearing none. Uh, next, we will move into legislation. First, we have Resolution fifty-three dash twenty-three, the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget amendment. This is a resolution to accept grant funding from the governor's office of crime control and prevention for police recruitment and retention, and to adjust the sums and amounts regarding the Forsites Police Department's recruitment and retention grant program provided by G O C C P and authorizing certain expenditures for the fiscal year annual budget beginning July one, twenty twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, you skipped, you skipped.
I'm sorry about that. Sorry about that. Where, where, I'm sorry. I must, I grabbed the tab? I grabbed the wrong tab. You know what? I saw the first resolution tab in the booklet, but the first, the one that's on top is not the first one. My apologies for that. Okay, let me read Resolution fifty-one dash twenty-three. Fifty No, we didn't do that. We didn't, we swore in, but we need to, to pass the resolution. So Resolution fifty-one dash twenty-three is a resolution of the mayor and council of the Town of Forsites confirming and officially appointing a new election board member. And this is introduced by And this is introduced by acting mayor Troy Lilly. I move that we adopt resolution fifty one dash twenty three. Is there a second? Discussion?
Question. Uh, well, on the agenda, the name is spelled Elaine, L E V I N. And on the resolution is spelled F E F, E L A I N E. Which one is it? And should set just something be.
She stated. Madam Clerk, could you confirm, uh, how Miss Elaine's first name is spelled? Okay, so there should be an E. Okay, so it's collect in the resolution. I, I would just want to make a point here at this, uh, juncture in the meeting, we've had a number of issues with, uh, attention to detail when it comes to specificity. Uh, so I think that we need to continue to pay attention to that. Uh, we'll help the proceedings of the meeting go smoother and, um, it's our responsibility. So I just want to mention that for staff that's in the room today.
And I don't mean to be a nuisance. But I do work in on my regular job of fraud. So I, I look at these details because without it, you could be another person. So.
Oh, I understand. Council member Bronson, I thank you for raising, uh, concerns where you find them. I appreciate that. So, uh, is there any further discussion?
And Mr. Mayor or Acting Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm gonna recommend a couple of amendments to this resolution. Basically, the last recital where as the mayor and council find that is in the best interest of the town, rewrite that thereafter to say to fill a vacancy in the board of elections. And then in section one, under Miss Elaine Pippens, uh, toward the end of that clause where it says the town of Forest Heights for the remainder, remaining portion of a two year term, which will expire the first Monday of March twenty twenty five, if those changes would be made. I think that would be good. I, I, I do note that the charter does not call for an alternate member. Uh, so, uh, and, and I understand she's filling, uh, a term of office for resigned members. So she, since she's not appointed for a full year term, she's she's gonna serve out, fill a vacancy and serve out the remainder of a two year term. Is that my understanding, Madam Clerk, Councilmember? All right. Those are the changes I'd recommend, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Bass, could you give me the change? I want to make sure I wrote them down correctly again. So the first one.
Strike the last recital to instead status follows, whereas the mayor and council find it is in the best interest of the town to fill a vacancy in the board of elections, period. And then under section one, it reads Mrs., have it read, uh, Ms., Mrs. Elaine Pippens and all the words thereafter until you get to the last few words. And, uh, I would, after the name of the town, the town of Forest Heights, for I would assert the remaining portion of a two year term, which will expire first Monday in March twenty twenty five. All other, all other verbiage would remain the same.
Thank you, Mr. Bass.
Sure.
Give me just a moment to notate that. Okay, well, uh, I, is there any other discussion? Okay, I move that we amend resolution fifty one dash twenty three in the one, two, three, third, whereas striking the words due to the pending election to immediately confirm and appoint three members of the board and an alternate and inserting to fill a vacancy in the board of election. And in the last sentence of section one, inserting after the words for the remain, uh, after the word for inserting the remaining portion of uh, well, I'm not inserting the two year term and just the remaining portion of. So I move that we amend. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, uh, I move that we adopt resolution fifty one dash twenty three as amended.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution fifty one dash twenty three as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, discussion. Excuse me. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Heinz.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Brownson.
Yes.
Councilmember McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Lilly.
Yes.
Motion passed as amended.
Next, we will have resolution fifty two dash twenty three. This is a resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Forest Heights, Maryland, to approve the full time employment appointment of John Kelly as a code enforcement officer with collateral duties as animal control officer to serve within the town of Forest Heights Police Department. This is introduced by acting mayor Lilly. Uh, um, question, are we trying to? No. Okay, so we're not adopting this. I'm not asking or moving that we adopt this tonight. Um, are there any questions? Is there any discussion here?
I have a, yeah, thank you. I have a question about the animal control part. Cause I'm not sure that we have ordinance for animal control. I thought it was, um, as Georgia's county that we had to call regarding animal control.
Uh, Chief Reese, could you speak to this for? Wait, please.
Yes, um, it's always been in the town and the job description that they would, um, do some sort of animal control. Though it is not the full function, they will have some type of animal control experience by going to, uh, Prince George's County and learning their ways. Um, obviously of, of their process. And so they like do things such as like dog, um, dog pole with the, uh, dog catching. Um, cat, catching cats or anything like that. But as far as like deer or picking up carcasses, no. Uh, but just a small world to try to to, um, combat the, I guess, the things that was, was going on in the past. It was actually done, um, the last budget, actually about a year ago that the council saw fit that we were getting an abundance of calls for loose dogs or something like that, that we wanted to include that collateral duties.
Yeah, I agree with that because it has been an issue in the town. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't overstepping what is required. So I'm sorry, go ahead, attorney.
Mr. Uh, Bass, did you want to add something?
Here. Thank you, Acting Mayor Lilly. In terms of the question, does the town have animal control authority at, through an ordinance? The answer is yes. The town's animal control ordinance is not as robust as the county's ordinance. Nor does it's like it does in some cases. Just in general, just to, to give a little education on this, whenever a municipality exercises the same delegated authority that the county is delegated, its ordinances will supersede and push out the county ordinances within the corporate limits, particularly when the town specifically says so. But your ordinance is a bit, uh, uh, finessed. It says that you do have an animal control ordinance and where there's a conflict between the county ordinance and the town, the town's ordinance supersedes the county ordinance. Otherwise, there are certain provisions or parts of the county animal control ordinance that still apply in the town and are enforced by county animal control officials in the town, but there's limited animal control, uh, governance through the town's own ordinance. And normally someone has a collateral duty in the town to do that. It's like code enforcement. All the code enforcement provisions in the town code uh, can be equally enforced by a sworn police officer as in addition to the code enforcement officers. So, uh, you know, there's some, there's some dual, can, there's concurrent jurisdiction between the county and the town for animal control. Sorry to belabor that.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Uh, I also add that I think we appropriated some funding for the training and I don't want to mistake what, or miss, uh, misspeak on what the amount was, but it was several thousand dollars for the code enforcement officers to be trained in conjunction. One question I have on this is, uh, were the job descriptions updated to include these duties in the personnel?
Uh, new job descriptions will be before the council for the entire government in July, and that is in the code enforcement officer's job description.
So, so those duties were added to the official position description?
Yes, for the ones that will be presented in July.
Thank you, Councilmember Noble.
Yes, my question for, um, animal control. When the code enforcement officer finds a dog who's on the loose, where will you put him? I mean, do you have a vehicle? Do you have a van or how will you?
So.
Mr., uh, Chief Reese, if you could.
Yes, yes, sir. Um, so normally what we do is, um, we either can transport the animal ourselves to, um, animal patrol, which is located over Brown Station Road. But, um, normally what we can do is if we contain the dog, uh, we don't have to house him, but if we can contain the dog, animal patrol will come to us and pick up the dog or animal that's just not dogs.
Thank you.
Uh, last item, uh, here, do you anticipate any other issues? Uh, is there anything anything else we should take into consideration? Storage, apprehension, uh, subduing animals, any of that that should be taken into account?
Um, so I think we did, um, this was last year. So when we did, um, do the endeavor of going with the animal control or code enforcement, um, I think I did say that uh, we will, code enforcement right now does not have a vehicle like I believe, uh, council, uh, member noble was, uh, leading them to. So we don't have a vehicle that will manage a animal like if we wanted to store or transport. So right now we just have to hold on tight, but, um, it will be a vehicle if we want to do any more, um, other than hold on site.
Thank you, Chief Reese. Uh, do you have a question, uh, Councilmember Heinz? No, I'm recognizing, go ahead.
Um, my question is, we're, you, you guys are talking about dogs, but there are, you know, stray cats, kittens. But there's also foxes or I don't know, um, and they're just coming out, you know, they're on the streets. So what happens when, you know, are you able to do those animal control?
So, um, notoriously, there was a fox that kind of roamed around, um, the town. We actually contacted, um, animal patrol. We actually contacted, um, the Department of Natural Resources Police. And they did not deem the fox as, uh, rabid. So if it is, you will treat that, that, um, that fox just like a dog or deer, um, it just roams. This is a part of our community. And they did say the fox is probably more scared of you than.
Madam Clerk, do you have something to add? Any other questions on, uh, resolution fifty two dash twenty three? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Now we will have resolution fifty three dash twenty three. This is a resolution to accept grant funding from the governor's office of crime control and prevention for police recruitment and retention and to adjust the sums and amounts regarding the Forest Heights Police Department's recruitment and retention grant program provided by G O C C P and authorizing certain expenditures for the fiscal year annual budget to and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, introduced by council member Paul and Noble. Is there a discussion? We're not voting on this tonight. Are we?
If you would, uh, would be so kind, because, uh, we have to expend the money by June thirtieth.
Okay. Minutes. Got you. Thank you, sir. Uh, I move that we adopt resolution fifty three dash twenty three. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion?
I have a question. What, I may sound ignorant, but I'm gonna.
Please ask.
What is boot and shoe allowance?
Uh, if I could actually have Chief Reese, if you could, uh, give us a little bit of background on, uh, exactly what this grant and funding will do.
Yeah, it's, it's supposed to be shoot. Um, but, um, this grant is a police retention and recruitment. So the governor office of crime control and prevention is to state helping, um, uh, law enforcement agencies across the state to, uh, retain, um, law enforcement officers, uh, for a period of time. Um, these are more of incentives that, uh, we as a department came hold our department and says, these are the things that, you know, that they might have needed. So there are, um, as you see, there are plenty of categories. Boot and shoe allowance, uh, we actually do have a longevity. We have a social media, radio, television category. We have, um, while low dry cleaning services where, uh, we have a dry, dry cleaning service. They come here, pick up the officer's uniform, dry clean it, drop it back off. Um, at using this, using these funds and the boot where we provide the officers boot, um, as they get worn, uh, for that, uh, year.
Chief Reese, could you also answer this question for me? Is there, um, are you having or experiencing an issue with, with recruitment or retaining officers at this time?
So, um, I believe that as a, as a town, um, the, the, the mayor council has been very gracious to the police department, really listening to the ideas of myself and bringing it to fore. Um, I will say on record, the only thing that, um, that the police department would, uh, that the officers are looking for is a stable, uh, state officers would like to stay here. I think that we have, we broaden our police department to where officers can grow in different areas of law enforcement, just not patrol. Um, but they said that a state retirement system, uh, which we are able to get into, uh, would really lock, lock them in. Um, though we are competing with other municipalities through Prince George's County and the state of Maryland, um, that offers the incentives, um, that will probably be the highest for myself, sir.
Okay. So generally a major issue with retaining, retaining talent.
So we are, uh, full staff, full staff acceptable one.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm trying to figure out, okay.
It's, uh, we apply for this grant, um, uh, beginning of the fiscal year, uh, but we did not get it. So this, the, um, the governor's office crime control prevention reached out and said, hey, listen, we have money left over. Please apply. And they sent that out throughout the state and that's what we did.
Okay, so, uh, so when you apply for this money at the last minute, they won't give you an extension of when you can spend the money? Did you ask?
So, so it is because they're trying to close out their, their, this is their fiscal year budget. So what they'll do is, uh, most likely this will reimburse us for all the things that we have already spent. So that's why the budget amendment is in. Um, but they will not. I've been, been down this road before. They will not give us an extension.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to ask that most of the times you can't spend money before you get it. So you, you, can you, you can backdate bills and put towards a grant that you got in May? I mean, July, June?
We're, we're not backdating. So for example, um, the town has already spent money on uniforms, while low dry cleaning. We're reimbursing ourselves with this grant, if you understand.
I understand that portion of it. So, but which means you had money to spend.
It was, we, we used it in our general budget. So the police department budget, so all of So the police department budget, so all of the line items such as for uniform allowance, things like that, we've used it. And so now we're going to reimburse ourselves with this grant.
You're not, you're not saying yourself, you're gonna put the money back in the general fund?
As of the police department, we're reimbursing the police department budget with this grant.
That's just bizarre. Thank you.
None? Um.
Um, Mr. Mayor, only thing, we have to amend this to read it correctly, because in my mind, I'm going to a show. I'm going to a police department show, okay?
I move that we amend Resolution fifty-three dash. I move to be amend Resolutions fifty-three dash twenty-three, uh, in the fourth, whereas striking the word show after boot and replacing it with shoe. Is there a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. I move that we adopt Resolution, uh, fifty-three, twenty-three as amended. Is there a second?
A second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution fifty-three dash twenty-three as amended. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Hines.
Yes.
Councilmember Browson. Browson.
Yes.
Councilmember McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Lilly.
Yes.
Motion passed. Five yes, zero no's.
Next, we will have Resolution fifty-four dash twenty-three. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we'll have Resolution fifty-four dash twenty-three, amending the fiscal year twenty-three budget for the Youth and Community Outreach Bureau and the Community Maintenance and Beautification Program through funding provided by the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning sums and amounts regarding Youth and Community Outreach Bureau and Beautification Program through funding provided by the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission for the fiscal year annual budget beginning July one, twenty twenty-two and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three pursuant to Resolution sixty dash twenty-two and sixty-five dash twenty-two, which accepted the funding and approved the programs, introduced by Acting Mayor Lilly. Yeah.
I have a question. Is, is it time?
Um, well, I'm gonna move that we adopt, and then I'm going, yeah, so I move that we adopt, uh, Resolution fifty-four dash twenty-three. Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion?
Um, so is, is this have a question?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not familiar with this process of the Bureau of Community Maintenance. So that was, is a bureau that has been established in the police department?
Uh, if I could have the acting town administrator answer that, please.
Yeah, uh, good evening. Um, thank you for the question. Uh, the fall of twenty twenty-two, the council adopted Resolution sixty dash twenty-two and sixty-five dash twenty-two, oh, my goodness, excuse me. Um, as well as a community maintenance and beautification program. Uh, that was where Mr. Holland was appointed, uh, to the Youth and Community Outreach Bureau. These were the funds that were given to us by Maryland National Cap- Capitol Park and Planning Commission, as well as Prince George's County. Um, an official budget amendment was not completed when the council accepted the program, new programming.
So, uh, uh, follow to that question, what is the beautification program?
The Community Maintenance and Beautification Program, Maryland National Park and Planning Commission provided us one hundred thousand dollars, and Prince George's County District Eight provided us four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, I believe. That was for us to, uh, like the trash cans that you see popping up now. Um, the crews, the extra crew that we had doing the tree pruning on. No, ma'am. Now that committee can recommend if they want, you know, trees or something like that.
Trash cans.
Trash cans, like the trash cans that are out there. Some more just came in last week, so they'll be getting put out. Um, if they have recommendations for that, we can incorporate that and use that grant funding versus general funding.
One more question in relation to that, um, is beautification, can that do, do with, um, compost, food compost, trash cans for food composts?
Yes, um, Councilmember Noble actually requested that we look into composting, um, some, I believe a couple, a couple meetings ago. Uh, so we are looking at adding that to our C G R, um, the trash, goody trash contract to see if we can get that in there using this funding.
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh.
And if I can just ask a clarifying question, so here we are receiving or formally acknowledging in the budget line items, the receipt of the one hundred thousand dollars per program, or is it a different amount?
It's so in this particular, um, resolution to amend the budget, this is the money from, again, Maryland National Capital, Capital Park and Planning.
Right.
It is one hundred thousand dollars for youth and community engagement, and one hundred thousand dollars for community maintenance and beautification.
Okay.
Two hundred thousand dollars. Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember McConnell.
So I hear what you're saying in terms of the, um, the money has to be spent by June, not June thirtieth, or it has to be just?
No, ma'am, this particular program is in line with the county's fiscal year, I'm sorry, park and planning's fiscal year, which ends June thirtieth like ours. So it has to be expended by June thirtieth. The Youth and Community Engagement Program, we've expended based on my report from the accounting software, somewhere around ninety-seven thousand dollars already. So we need to get that back. For beautification, um, I'm still adding up the expenses. I know we have not expended that much. So you will see us rapidly trying to do some beautification programs by June thirtieth, or at least get it ordered, or get the contracts before you for approval, um, at the next meeting, so that it's dated by June thirtieth, so we can be reimbursed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Uh, I do want to make one small amendment. Uh, I move that we amend Resolution fifty-four dash twenty-three. Uh, it says introduced by Mayor Lilly, but if I could add acting, insert acting for, uh, Mayor Troy Lilly. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. I move that we adopt Resolution fifty-four twenty-three as amended.
A second.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Hines.
Yes.
Councilmember Browson. Yes. Councilmember McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Lilly.
Yes.
Motion passed. Five yes, zero no, as amended.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have Resolution fifty-five dash twenty-three, fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget amendment. This is a resolution to accept local impact grant funding from Prince George's County and to adjust the sums and amounts regarding infrastructure and public safety, and authorizing certain expenditures for the fiscal year annual budget beginning July one, twenty twenty-two and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three, introduced by Acting Mayor Lilly. Excuse me, um, I move that we adopt Resolution fifty-five dash twenty-three.
Is, isn't that the one we just did?
Uh, no, Councilmember Browson, this is related to local impact grant funding, which is, uh, directly which comes from MGM and then is, uh, distributed uh, in the county's annual fiscal year budget.
I don't see that in the package, I'm sorry. Oh, it's gonna have sixty. I stuck it, you know. That's where thirteen.
It should.
I know, right? I don't have that.
Yeah, there's a, there's a contract and there's a number of items, uh, I think the divider should separate, um, so you can get to fifty-five dash twenty-three. Okay, I see you, I understand, I see. Some of us have binders, some of us have, um, i- items that are together. So it would be behind a page.
Or thirteen.
Yes, behind page thirteen of the contract with Maryland National Capital Parks and Planning.
Exhibit C. Yes, twelve, thirteen. And then goes sixty-five, twenty-two.
No, after.
After that, continue to look through, yeah, the sixty-five, twenty-two is related to legislation passed last, um, last year.
Oh, after the other twelve.
There's a number of exhibits, yeah, there's a number of exhibits in that particular one.
Right. Thank you.
So I, uh, I move that we adopt Resolution fifty-five dash twenty-three.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution fifty-five dash twenty-three. Is there any discussion?
Sorry. The only, yeah.
Councilmember Browson.
The only thing I circled was requested by town administrator. Is, is that, um, a, a person, or is it the acting town administrator? Or is it, should be a name, or? Um, or is it acting town administrator, or should it be a name?
Uh, it is the acting town administrator. Uh, we can let's amend that. I move that we amend Resolution fifty-five dash twenty-three, inserting acting in front of the word.
Now we don't put his name, or should we? We don't have to.
Is there a second?
That's correct.
It has been moved and seconded that we amend Resolution fifty-five dash twenty-three, inserting the word acting in front of town administrator behind the requested byline. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The eyes have it. I move that we adopt Resolution fifty-five dash twenty-three as amended.
A second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution fifty-five dash twenty-three as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Hines.
Yeah.
Councilmember Browson.
Yes.
Councilmember McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Lilly.
Yes.
Motion passed, five yes, zero no's, as amended.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have emergency ordinance number zero-three dash twenty-three. This is an emergency, emergency ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Forest Heights, Maryland to approve and adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget and authorize this amendment from time to time by resolution introduced by Acting Mayor Lilly. And, uh, I believe I need to read the first portion of this. Mr. Best, with the ordinance, we're gonna pass it tonight, we're gonna vote on this, this ordinance tonight as an emergency ordinance. Do I need to read the first paragraph in this, or did I suffice by reading that, uh, that synopsis under the title there? Thank you, Mr. Best. Uh, I move that we adopt ordinance zero-three dash twenty-three. It has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance zero-three dash twenty-three. Discussion? Councilmember Noble.
Yes, um, I just made a, a note to myself, um, with the last meeting discussion with Councilmember Browson about rental properties. If we could get, and I don't know if that's from the code enforcement, the number of rental properties listed, so we can have a calculation for future amendments for the, um, property tax on rented properties. So we can get an idea of what the rate should be and how many properties we're talking about. Thank you.
Yeah, if there are members of the staff who need to contribute to that, is, um, please indicate if you'd like to speak, can we do that? Mr. Green?
I'm gonna look that up now, and I'll give you the number in just a second.
Can't hear you.
See, I'm gonna look it up now, and I'll give you a number in just a second.
We don't need him right now.
Well, uh, we're not gonna make the change to the amendment or to the budget amendment ordinance tonight, so, uh, you can have time to research and let us know at a later time, um, just do so when you can, as soon as possible, that would be very helpful.
Yes, sir.
Uh, at this time, I wanted to mention that the Finance Committee met last week. In addition to the Finance Committee, I believe, Councilmember Browson also joined us virtually. And, um, there were some recommendations that were made for changes to the, uh, budget. And if I'm correct, um, Mr. Jones, Acting Town Administrator, we have incorporated some of the recommendations from that, um.
Yes, sir. Uh, those surrounded the work, increased workers' compensation costs. Uh, we have incorporated those for each department, um, and another note is that the council will notice they received a new, um, layout of the budget that's a little easier to read, uh, and gives the definitions. The Council, uh, Member Browson, make sure that we have in there, um. The, the main thing that we discussed was workers' compensation. You'll notice that workers' compensation, FICA, life insurance are all categorized under general operating expenses for the town, but it is broken out by department, so you can see what each department is costing the town in those areas. And that was at the request as well of our, uh, new treasurer.
And, uh, Mr. Mackenzie, did you want to speak further about the, uh, changes to the format of the budget for F Y twenty-four, sir?
Absolutely.
And please, uh, make sure that mic is very close to your person, so we can hear you. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely, um, I, I basically.
Little closer, little closer.
Based on what I saw, I, I think based on my, um, industry practices, we have done many budgets, I think we could definitely spice it up a little, surprise it up a little bit to be able to specifically look at costs in a sense of department and be able to measure, make more strategic decisions. And so based on that, this, this that we're doing right here will help us to look at stuff more strategically and know how to go forward to make good decisions based on the departments, so.
Also, uh, Mr. Mackenzie, I think that there was a request, uh, and a partnership. Also, uh, Mister Mackenzie, I think that there was a request uh, and a partnership between you and other staff members. On the FTE schedules at one of the exhibits we have here as well.
Yes, I did that. We did work on that also.
It's the last two pages of the doc, of the booklet.
So the FTE schedule isn't, we, 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 we've done, we reconciled it, and, and um, going forward, we're gonna make sure. That not just that we have it before you, but we know who, who we have hired. Not looking, getting it from a third party, but we know who is on our, who is working for the town. So that's what that update is all about.
And if I'm correct, the FTE schedules, like the last two pages of the budget document. Which is at the very end of your packet, if you're trying to refer to it.
Age thirty-eight and thirty-nine. Mister Mayor, can I add something about the FTE schedule?
Ye- yes, yes, you can, Mister Jones.
Uh, we took out the names, uh, since it's a public document, so the column. Um, we can provide you all the document with the names in it if you need it. And I know that Councilmember Brownson had requested in the finance meeting to know which funding source for each position. So that we can monitor that. You'll notice that the last column actually lists the funding source for each.
That's right.
Position.
So this, this is a good, this is a good start, um, and it's a lot to adjust tonight. So you don't expect us to, to vote on this tonight since we're just getting it.
It is the same budget that you read in that spreadsheet with the, the ruler, but we made it look prettier for you, that's all.
Right, but I mean, we couldn't barely read the one earlier, so we had questions, uh, minimal questions. Now we wanna make sure that, well, I wanna make sure that what we sugge- suggested and what you said you were gonna do. Had been done in this document, but we can't do, we can't get through all this tonight.
So it's, it's a document.
Uh, Mister Mackenzie, would you like to add something there, sir?
This right now is a rushed document, but we'll get better document as you go along.
Yeah, I agree.
This is just to make sure that you can, you're able to, to, to read the document. So we went, I went to, based on my industry practices to make sure that you guys have something. You can look at more eligible and then be able to make decisions you wanna make, so that's it.
And, and Mister Mackenzie, the record, so the recommendations from the, from the. Finance committee were implemented, but the changes, there weren't changes to the budget unless. We made a recommendation at the meeting and this is the same budget.
Right, nothing changed.
That we had in the, in the, the other format, but it just has been organized, so it is read differently.
Not, not, no number changed, we just formatted it in a, in a more legible way. So you guys can sit and easily look at the numbers and be able to make quick decisions as opposed to reading through and skipping through pages. You can see right before you, so some more so, um, of viewing pur- purpose to be able to make that decision on a quick basis, so.
Thank you, Mister Mackenzie. Thank you, sir. Councilmember McDonald.
Yes, I have a question. Uh, so I guess I'm trying to understand this being an emergency ordinance.
Yes, we normally, an ordinance has a period of uh. I believe it's thirty days or more before it will go into effect. If it's passed as a normal ordinance, they would get a first and second reading. But because we need to adopt the budget before the end of the fiscal year on June thirtieth, we are uh, passing an emergency ordinance tonight. Um, which will go into effect immediately, which means that we will not miss our deadline, um. And the other thing is if we were to miss the deadline of June thirtieth with a normal ordinance, then the prior year's budget would go into effect.
Okay, second question is the automated enforcement. Uh, as well as the capital improvement. Budget. There's an asterisk beside each one of those. Where's the reference to those asterisks?
Uh, Mister Mackenzie, are you aware of uh, the, there's an asterisk. And this is on page four-six or the ordinance?
So that's a question that um, I would, I would pass back to Mister Jones. And um. It, it's, it's an item that, that is there, but um, I, it's, I didn't wanna miss out, I leave a line out. So it's since that's part of the budget, it's for per description, so he himself know the more detail as to. As far as description is concerned, but it's an illegitimate item, so.
The asterisk.
It meant, it was for us to know we needed to go back and double check some things in the budget, uh, so it can be stricken. It shouldn't be on the document.
So all three of those items, including the restricted fundings asterisk as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Those should be deleted.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember McDonald, do you wanna um, move to, to strike those items?
Yes, not the items, but we're just.
The asterisks.
The asterisks, yes, I'm making a motion. Okay, so I make a motion that we remove the asterisks that um, is on page. Four of six, but the asterisks beside automated enforcement. The asterisk beside capital improvement and the asterisk beside restricted funding. I have a second.
I second. It has been moved and seconded that we amend ordinance zero-three dash twenty-three, striking the asterisks from. Page four-six of the ordinance under automated enforcement and that dollar amount. Capital improvement in that dollar amount, restricted funding and that dollar amount. Ever?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, amendment uh, is adopted. Is there any other discussion on resolution of, of ordinance zero-three dash twenty-three?
Well, I, I can say I haven't, I mean, I know this is what we've seen before and it was so much that I didn't understand. From the other document, this helps explain it a lot. Now I need, I need time to look at it, to understand, to put the dots together. So I can't vote on this tonight. Cause I just got it and I need to go look through it for myself.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hines.
I'm in agreement with Councilwoman Brownson. Um, we were always, you know, we always said that we would like, you know, something was given to us the day of. We wanted to be able to, you know, read it. I know I need that because this is, you know, so. I'm not gonna be able to vote on it.
Uh, I have a question, so when, when was the uh, the budget in its current form delivered to council?
Five-thirty today for the new format.
Okay, were there any material changes in that um, new format? There are numbers.
There are no changes in figures or numbers. It was simply made to be a more readable document.
Councilmember Noble.
I think um, as far as the budget, the numbers are the sa- same that we've already reviewed. This is just um, more detail, more information for us to. Understand it better, but the numbers are the same.
I just wanted to share very quickly, we had a robust discussion uh, at the last meeting about the budget. And we made recommendations to the concerns that were raised. So if the, unless there's some significant changes that need to be reconsidered. Then, you know, I guess that would be the conscience of that person, but that's my share.
Yeah, I might also add that, um, I think the changes that we recommended in the, in the finance committee meeting were very minimal. So if we have minutes, we can um, can we go through the detail of what those changes were? We could verify if those items are intact in this budget very quickly, I believe.
Um, I can, I just, since I attended the um, finance meeting. I think our concern was the breakdown and the um, explanations and definitions. Or where the money was coming from. And based on this report, this nice proposed budget is all. I see that those recommendations were made with the same numbers that we had reviewed before. It's just more pages as opposed to what we had before.
I'm going to ask uh. Either Madam Clerk or. Someone on the staff, if you could read out the total expenditure amount or the budget that we. Be um, discussed at the finance hearing versus the budget that we're presented with in our packet today to verify that it's the same.
Uh, based on uh, my, my own minutes and how we moved uh, the funding around. It was only under workers' compensation. We were to decrease the police department's workers' compensation bu. Budget and divvy that between DPW administration, the elected officials. Uh, page number thirteen, under the first highlighted workers' compensation nine, account number nine thousand three. Seven two-two-nine, the total sum was a hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Uh, for those that were in the finance committee meeting, remember that was a new premium amount from the ninety-nine thousand. Uh, that it was in FY twenty-three. That is the only updates that we made uh, to the budget, solely surrounded the work, the new workers' comp premium. We did not have to amend trash because it was already. Uh, budgeted at two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for FY twenty-four. Uh, the other request uh, from the committee and the council members that were present were uh. Merely contextual in nature, that was placing an FTE schedule in there. And uh, for Councilmember Brownson, what funding source, so we'd be able to track uh, when those sources ran out. And if we needed to do something with those positions.
I'm trying to follow what you're saying, but I do remember one question about the expenses. And you said that there was, I, I've talked about. All the expenses versus what you anticipate coming in.
Yes, ma'am.
And you said, but there's a lot of money coming in and it, it needs to be, that needs to be adjusted. Did you adjust that?
No, ma'am, because that's in FY two-three. You wouldn't see that in this report. Where you would see that reconciliation would be in your fourth quarter report from the finance department. The actual report, not, that has nothing to do with the, the budget document, it's so. That's more reconciliation for the uh, expenses report or revenues report from finance. Because your question in the meeting was, is the sums of money on the revenue tab, some in the third quarter report. Show that we had only received a certain percentage or no percentage. We have quite a bit of reconciliation to do in fourth quarter. So in order to know what we actually received, we would have to give you an expense report at the end of fourth quarter um, to know that. But unfortunately, we have to pass a budget before that, that happens. That does not stop us from coming back to the table in first quarter and amending the budget if we need to.
Thank you, Mister Jones. Councilmember McDonald.
One tip, but comment, I guess that's when we started talking about uh, acquiring um, a, a, an accounts receivable. Um, person who is able to actually calculate those sums, okay?
Correct.
And we'll have that person on board.
We're gonna hopefully start interviews next week.
Um, so I. Just wanna go back to Councilmember uh, Brownson and Councilmember Hines. Oh, I'm just asking if you uh, have any more comments, if you are still uh, thinking that you can't vote on the budget tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
I know some of the things happen.
So I have a question.
Councilmember McDonald.
So if that be the case, do we, because.
No, we don't. This is an emergency ordinance, we need a super majority to pass this tonight.
Exactly, so my question is to that, um, do we table it till when? Like, how long do we give for review? So that we can move forward.
Yeah, our next scheduled meeting is not until June the twenty-first, which puts us within nine days of the end of the fiscal year. I would really prefer uh, not to continue, continue the precedent of adopting the budget at the very, very last minute. Um, and so that's the next regularly scheduled meeting date that we have, we're also conducting an election. And so I would just ask that you keep in mind that the town's. Resources and time is uh, stretched in the next, what's today's date, today's uh, June the fifth. So in the next twenty-five days, we have a lot of things that we are coordinating and trying to accomplish. So if there's a proposed date that's earl- earlier than that, um, we might be able to entertain that, even if it's a virtual. Um, Councilmember Noble.
Yes, I just wanna, this is my comment on the budget throughout the year, the entire fiscal year for the town. We are amending the budget. You know, because of money received that we didn't anticipate or expenses that occurred that we didn't anticipate. So it's just, I guess for me, the budget process is so, is ongoing. And for that, if, I guess, Councilmember Hines and Councilmember Brownson. Um, how much time? Do you think, and then we have Councilman Kennedy, who's absent tonight, so that we can propose a date prior to. The town meeting to vote on it.
Well, for me. If, I don't know, well, I will approve it even if I got another seven days, so that's for me. That's all I can say. So time is not the, as much of the issue of me not understanding it. So I'm, I'm not sure you would get my approval even if you had twenty days, yes.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Hines.
I wasn't at the May thirty-first, I know, the meeting, last meeting, so I need to take this home. And I need to look at it, you know, the way that I can see it. So you say that it's pretty much the same, I just need to see it, okay? So I'm not asking for much time, but if I can just review it. So if you set something else up, another date, if you can, that's fine.
Um, well, so I think that I would. I wanna propter a date right now, since the time is very short. We've got a lot of things already on the calendar and I'm gonna suggest that this be a virtual meeting as well. Um, but I wanted to do it, you know, within the next week, if possible, so I'm thinking, let's look at this date. Let me see here. Could we do this next Monday, the twelfth? At six-thirty P M. Um, okay. I won't be able to attend the thirteenth. Um. Yeah, I won't be able to attend the thirteenth. This Friday, June the ninth? Okay, well, um. Madam Clerk, town administrator, can we accommodate a Friday, June ninth virtual hearing?
Yes, sir. I'll put on the schedule and get the Zoom links out.
Does that give us ample time to uh, get an agenda together to advertise it for the public to attend?
We will publish it tomorrow.
Um, six thirty. Okay, so we. See here, I moved that we schedule, I'm sorry, let me. I, um. I moved that we schedule a meeting, a special meeting on, this is gonna be Friday, June the ninth. For the council to reconvene virtually to vote on this budget ordinance zero three dash twenty three at six thirty PM. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Uh, all right, I also moved that we. Table uh, ordinance zero three dash twenty three until Friday, June ninth. At six thirty PM. It has been motioned and seconded. That we table resolution zero three dash twenty three until Friday, June ninth. Or uh, virtually scheduled meeting at six thirty. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. We have all the details that we need. Is there any other staff comment uh, needed on this particular item? Mr. Best, anything else uh, to add here? Yes. Okay, thank you, sir. Any other staff input? Miss uh, Madam Clerk, you have every, everything that you need? All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes uh, legislation for today. I'm sorry, excuse me. No, that does conclude it. I'm sorry. So next we'll have councilmember and uh, mayor reports. I'll begin with Ward one.
So two things, one is I'm looking forward to the um, MML training at the end of the month. So that I can become more acclimated into my new role as councilmember of Ward one. So I'm, I'm truly excited about that opportunity. Um, also, I'm in the process of uh, developing two engagement, uh, youth, well, one. Youth opportu, one youth event, it's gonna be a um, a cycling event. And an adult cycling event. For those who don't know, I am a lover of my bicycle. And I will be working with our youth to um, have this event in. August, the youth event will be in August and the adult event would be in September. I'm looking forward to both of those and the training as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember McDonald. Are you partnering with uh, Mr. Holland?
Yes, partnering with Mr. Holland and also I wanted to make a note that I will be riding this. Weekend, this Saturday with the Oxen Hill um, Bicycle Club. They have an event. Um, that will be um, this Saturday that I'll be attending. So they have different. Different trails that you can ride. So I'm looking forward to that and I'll report back on my experience too. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Noble. Um, I'm councilmember McDonald. Uh, I guess I need to eat before I come to the meeting, so. There's food here. I didn't get a chance to eat any though. Uh, Ward two, councilmember.
I have nothing to prepare for.
And Ward three. Councilmember Hines.
Yes, um, this Saturday from one to three, we're doing our meet and greet. Just wanted to put it out there, come with your suggestions, your comments. You know, have a nice light lunch, um, meet your council representatives, myself and councilwoman Noble. So we look forward to um, that. That's about it. Thank you.
What was the time for that again?
From one to three.
One, two, three. Excellent. Councilmember Noble.
I have nothing to add, other than I have something for councilmember um, McDonald on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Project Grant Program. From the Merlin Department of Transportation.
All right, um, so we have a number of items coming up for the town this month. Uh, as councilmembers Noble and Hines have already notated, there will be the Ward three. Meeting greet on Saturday. I hope that we'll see lots of folks out there. I'll be there to attend as well. Uh, we also have. A celebration and an observation of uh, the Juneteenth holiday happening on. Mister Jones, could you speak on that a little more?
Yes, sir. Uh, the town will celebrate Juneteenth on Monday, June nineteenth. From two to six PM at the gathering space located next to Henry's. There will be uh, free food, live entertainment, games for the children, uh, entertainment for the adults. Um, so come out and celebrate Juneteenth with us. And actually, on that Saturday, which is the seventeenth, is the police department's water bash. Uh, at Bell Acres Park off of North Huron.
Uh, what time is the water bash going on?
Two PM. And that one also has free food and activities. That one's geared more towards the kids, but the adults seem to like throw water balloons more. Uh, and then on the twenty fourth of June is a. Forest Heights uh, Health Symposium sponsored by the Forest Heights Police Department and. Uh, dementia-friendly South County. Here in the hall, there'll be uh, numerous health vendors, uh, mental health screening and assessments. And all of those flyers should be out uh, by Wednesday of this week and your emails into the community, so. In that event, I'm sorry, let me click on my calendar, is the time for the twenty fourth. It's ten, ten AM. My calendar says ten, but that might be the whole range, eleven AM. Eleven to two PM and there's free health screenings and things like that, so.
Councilmember McDonald.
Just for clarity, because you do have a couple of things. So the Forest Heights Health Day is on June twenty fourth.
Yes, ma'am.
At eleven AM.
Eleven to two.
Okay, and then the police department. Event.
The water bash.
Water bash.
Is on Saturday, June seventeenth, uh, two to six at Bell Acres Park, North Huron Drive.
Thank you.
And then Juneteenth, uh, we're calling it the Juneteenth Family Reunion. Uh, that's on the nineteenth, back two o'clock. Little DJ, little live entertainment, it should be fun.
Well, hopefully you'll lead us, uh, councilmember Brownson. Well, happy early birthday to councilmember Teresa Brownson.
My, my birthday is a holiday.
Madam Clerk. Two PM, two to six. Okay, so Juneteenth on Monday, June nineteenth will begin at two PM. At the gathering space next to Henry's. Great, thank you. So uh, there's one, one other item I wanna point out. We are having an election on Tuesday, June the twentieth. So I want to encourage all residents to um, come out and participate. During that election, it will be from, polls will be open from eleven AM to eight PM. Here at the town hall. Um, you can cast your ballot in person. Uh, you cannot mail in a ballot, though. You have to cast a ballot in person. We have absentee balloting. As well. Am I right about that, Madam Clerk? Yes. So absentee balloting and in-person balloting. Um, is available. We look forward to seeing as many people out as possible who can uh, turn out and be engaged in our democratic process. And that is all that I have. Next, we will move on to new business. Um, first, we're going to discuss the Board Doc training and scheduling a date. Madam Clerk. Did you actually first give us an update on where we are with Board Docs integration? Uh, I know we've been talking about this for quite a long time. Uh, and we are very much looking forward to getting everything into one place in a central repository. Uh, give me, give me a brief update on where we are with the Board Docs system right now.
Yes, where we at with the Board Dot is, um, we, I have been training with um, one of their representative. And we are up to, my training is completed. My training is completed and now we are ready for the staff and the council to be trained on Board Dot. And um, I guess you guys know a little bit about the software.
Is everyone on the council familiar with the software?
Question, what is Board Dot?
Board Dot is a software that allow you to enter um, the agenda. Um, minutes, resolutions, um, in each category. The council will have a, um, and then the public will be available to see it. Uh, once we insert that information in. So it will eliminate, what it does is eliminate paper. And so everything will be inserted into that document. And so you guys can go in and see it ahead of time. It, everything will be scheduled. Like the package will come in um, and go out to the public forty two hours prior to the meeting. You out, you guys would be able to, the mayor and the town administrator will be able to go. On the software and add stuff onto the agenda. You guys will be available to see it. But you guys would not be available to enter, add on to that agenda. But you can't see it. You can also vote at your seat. Um, instead of doing a verbal calling, all of that stuff will take place.
So we have to bring our laptops to the meeting?
Well, it would be.
It's optional.
How are we gonna vote, but, but, but we did not have our laptops?
The town clerk can still record your verbal vote if you choose not to use your electronic devices. We would encourage you to use them, but.
So you, you all would download that on our laptops?
It's a web base, it's just a browser, just a website.
And, 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 and council uh, member Brownson, it is not a difficult software. It's very friendly. It's very usable friendly and I, and I wasn't making the statement that um, you don't have to, you need to bring yourself your laptop. I was just saying that it is a very friendly um, software to use, even if you're using it at home. Or wherever, it's a friendly software to use.
Well, just, I, I would just add there, uh, everyone's interpretation can be different. So once we get the training, then we'll see. Yeah, if it makes sense, what makes sense to one doesn't always make sense to the other. But we, it's good to hear that so far you've uh, had a good experience learning from it. I hope the council will have the same.
Oh, I'm sorry. How long is the training?
The training will be one hour. We're gonna do two hours, we're gonna do two hours for the training.
Are you gonna do the training?
No, ma'am, I will not go on the train. There would be a representative during the training.
So.
We could schedule it. We, I was thinking that we could break it up, you know, so just in case you have a question. And it could, I can ask him if we could do four hours.
Um, I was gonna ask, is it possible to do more than one?
It would definitely be more than one hour, yes.
Yes, um, actually, discussion for tonight was to uh, get a consensus from the council on dates. June appears to be extremely busy, so uh, if we could look at July dates to set your training so that we can. Put it on the calendar and get this over with, because it has been dragging out for months.
Can you do survey my pieces, uh, so we can select some dates?
I can if, if the mayor, if that's, if that's what you guys choose.
Well, uh, I think we actually have the ability to conduct a poll uh, through email.
Yes, we can.
So we can get some dates, I mean, because everybody's schedule is so busy.
Um, what, what month are we targeting, July or August?
Uh, July.
July, okay. Um, I guess we can conduct a poll, either sending a snail email. Or I think there's actually a polling function in Teams on Microsoft that can allow us to vote simultaneously. On a date or, so um, it doesn't look like we're gonna select one tonight.
On our next work session in July. I was trying to check the calendar. Could we do it an hour before the work session, have one of the training session? At that time, I'm just trying to coordinate the times that we have already allocated for. Yeah.
Let's coordinate with the meeting date, a couple hours beforehand. Okay, so when is the meeting date in July? We have obviously the first Monday, but I don't think we'll be targeting that one, the third Wednesday.
So it's the fourth or the fifth or something like that.
So we should be looking at the third Wednesday in that case.
July nineteenth.
No, I don't think the first Monday is a good uh, suggestion because it's around the holiday. It's, it would be Tuesday, the fourth, and then we also, um. Well, I'm open to entertain, is the fourth a time when we expect everyone to be here in present?
What's the first Monday in July?
It's the third.
It's the third, so the holiday is gonna be observed on the third.
Yes.
Correct, correct? That's gonna be on the fourth, okay, I'm sorry. Excuse me. So we on the day.
No.
No.
No, I don't do birth to well between us. So the third, I mean, since it's not the holiday, hour before.
Um.
This is a work session anyway.
It's not a federal holiday.
So we'll be here July third for our regularly scheduled first Monday meeting. Uh, we will be coming back from MML the week prior. But that may not be an issue. Um, I think that. One thing I think we should do is maybe try to engage councilmember Kennedy, because I know he's not here to speak on whether he's gonna be in the area. Hopefully, he will be. Uh, that weekend. So the third is, is a potential date. Any co, any conflicts from you, councilmember McDonald? Okay. Uh. Let's tentatively schedule for the third and we'll reach out to councilmember Kennedy.
At six o'clock.
Is he gonna be able to make it at six o'clock?
I don't really need to be here. I don't have to be here, because I'm familiar with the software, so I don't need the training.
You've used Board Docs.
I mean, we use SharePoint, so it's sort of similar.
But you, you've used Board Docs?
Not Board Docs, but I've used SharePoint, so I mean, it's not really difficult to be.
Okay.
I'm just saying. Because that's a holiday. I, I, I can't tell you whether I'm gonna be available or not. I don't think.
Well, you, you don't want. Okay, so let's take that date back and do this third.
I have, I, I do have two serious questions, though.
It's regarding this Board Docs, because we need to finish this item first. Well, I don't think I have a consensus from the council. To me, it could be the third or it can be the nineteenth. I just wanna take into account whether councilmember Kennedy can attend. So uh, let's do this. We'll tentatively schedule for the nineteenth. We'll find out councilmember Kennedy's schedule. We'll adjust from there if need, if needed. And if we do it on the nineteenth, it's gonna be at six PM. That will give us actually two hours before the meeting starts.
You'll make sure you have some.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Did you wanna start later, six thirty? Did you want to start later, set six thirty? Okay, we'll do six o'clock on the nineteenth tentatively. Thank you. All right, uh next item. Under, actually, you know what? Let me, if I may, I move that we amend this agenda. Um we need to add an item, so I move that we amend tonight's agenda to include. Um a discussion for Training Day for Active Shooter Training for the Council. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it. Uh next, we're discussing, uh there's a proposal that's included as part of your packet tonight. For uh the Youth and Community Development Bureau. I believe. Is that in here?
Yes.
Does everyone have that?
What is this? Let's say, you've sent some bureau? No, that can't be the new bureau.
So uh we have a proposal to the town of Forest Heights from C D W B Consulting. Uh of which the principal is C Diane Wallace Booker, who. Is a nonprofit executive with twenty-five years of experience in the local and national level, introducing uh positive youth development programs. Um her bio is attached as well as uh the proposal is outlined. With some of the results of her past work, her approach to doing positive youth development with um young folks. And communities similar to ours and then. The process for doing this work and it is mainly uh an assessment of. The resources exist in our town and in the neighboring area. To establish a baseline of what is there. Um it also includes. Rapid gathering of data and pulling that data together. To create a data map of the assets, the gaps, and identifying stakeholders. Um this is a process that will take likely six to eight months and it includes. Uh multiple engagements with the public and the town residents, specifically youth and their parents.
Says twelve or fifteen weeks.
I'm sorry?
Those say it costs twelve, twelve, fifteen weeks, you say six months.
Um. I'm sorry, maybe I misspoke on the, on the duration. Forgive me for that, but um it also includes the deliverables that would be given to the town. At the end of this process and it includes coordination with our, or would include coordination with our youth coordinator, uh Keith Holland. Establishing a baseline and then adopting, adopting a strategic plan for the bureau. And uh another, number of other items which are detailed in the proposal. Now, we're not voting on this tonight. It's just um an introductory discussion. So the council, please feel free to look through um this information and um will. Look to uh revisit and consider this at a later date, but I just wanted to let you know that since we've adopted the bureau. We have a coordinator on staff and we want to do um more impactful work with our youth. This is to help us adopt a formal plan that outlines what we'll be doing, when, where, how. And um I think that will set us up for success going forward.
I I looked through the proposal and I have a question. Is this um Youth Bureau and this proposal? Is this gonna cover all District Eight or just Forest Heights?
It's gonna co- cover a combination, so it will be for uh the general areas surrounding Forest Heights. Including uh many areas of district, not the entire district, because it's very large. You know, it stretches down as far as Clinton and Allentown Road, but. This is gonna cover the immediate communities that touch the town if I'm um. Speaking correctly. And uh the proposal. Would be uh funded through grant, grant funding that we get from the county. We get a combination of that funding, both from Maryland National Capitol Park and Plain. But also there's a separate line item uh that's directly in the county's budget um that would provide funding for the proposal. Mister Jones.
Yes, sir.
We still haven't received the deposit from that funding, have we, from the county?
No, sir. Uh we are anticipating that that will be a budget amendment in July to add that four hundred and forty thousand for youth programming.
Okay.
We did not add it into revenues in the budget.
That's what I thought, okay. Uh Councilmember Hines, did you have a question? Councilmember McDonald.
Yes, so was this an R F P? I'm just trying to figure out where did the proposal come from?
No, it's not an R F P. No, no, this is a um, this is a. Single source uh proposal.
So are there considerations for other?
Well, no, and, no, and I will tell you why. Um. The reason for this is this has been a conversation that I've had with this particular firm, but we were in a situation where we were expecting to receive the funding. And to be able to expend some of the grant funds before the fiscal year was over. But I guess maybe that may not happen. Are we still on track? So that's gonna be fiscal year twenty twenty-four?
Yes, sir, we are um waiting for the disbursement, so it probably will not occur until June thirtieth or July first.
Okay.
So that's the case that you have to uh the time to go out and get others, uh get other proposals.
Sure, if the council wants to suggest some other firms that you might look at.
I'm just trying to address a question about was this, you said it was a sole source. Because you had to, you had to pick someone quickly. So now that you don't have to pick someone quickly. Then you have an opportunity to get other.
So sources, sole source is that you only have. A provider that can give you exactly what it is that you're asking for to meet your goals and objectives. So are we saying then that this provider is the only provider?
Well, so far, this is the uh the only person I found who's able to do it on this level and deploy it. In this way. Um this is also a council, a county, county resident. She lives in uh Prince George's County and is very familiar with. Work in this area and also has done uh work on the other side of the border in Washington, D C as part of the U S Dream Academy. Um so I'm willing to consider um some other proposals to stack up against this one for sure, if council members uh find someone with similar expertise.
But if you put it out there, we don't have to find someone, they will come to you, right?
Potentially.
Okay, yeah, so we don't have to find someone. If you put the requests out there, they'll come to you.
Right, that's why I was asking if this was an R F P. Um because if we're talking about just developing a framework. Um I mean, we want to be clear as to what it is that we're trying to accomplish in that framework. This person, I mean, they've shown us, you know, what they can do. But yeah, we should, I'm thinking that we probably could consider other providers as well, so yeah.
Uh thanks for, thanks for those suggestions, Council. So uh any other questions on this proposal? Hearing none, we will now move on to the. Training date for the Active Shooter Training for the Council.
Yes, sir. Uh Councilmember Hans has been requesting for some time that we seek out this uh. Training for the council. Um I have been in contact with some firms and chosen uh the firm to do the training. Uh surprisingly, it had a really good cost savings. Um so we need you all to tell us. Again, something else we need to find a date for probably in July. Um. To get trained. It's really, we try not to call it active shooter anymore, but active assailant, because it could be other. When it comes to uh meetings like this, it could be other things outside of just someone, you know, shooting, so.
My question, you say you found someone that would do it and there's a, you said minimum fee?
There's a reasonable cost, yes.
You couldn't find someone that does it free?
Hmm, no. Uh yeah, I can give you all the videos from online, but.
Yeah, but I, I, the reason I'm saying this is because we had the active shooting at where I work. And the, out of the University of Maryland, they came and did the training for us and it was free.
Oh, okay.
Reason why I mentioned that.
Okay.
Will it be on a Saturday? Is that, that what we're looking for?
It could be wherever this body chooses uh for it to be. No, ma'am, it'll uh.
Uh Mister Jones, could you tell us just uh the duration of time that we might need to be considering and what the activities are? Will we go in through that day?
Yes, sir. It's about a two and a half hour um training. Uh it will be here. And we will likely set up um the room the same way we do our current meetings, so that you could run through some mock drills. But it's basically to profile active assailants uh from your point of view. To be able to gauge the public. I'm not gonna give away everything, because we're in an open session, but um and then how we respond to. Those violent situations and what your actions should be, so. We'll also probably talk about um the creation of an emergency plan, the basics for it.
Okay, so we've got a training on July eighteenth ahead of that third Wednesday meeting. Am I saying this date correctly? July nineteenth. Okay, so we need to find another date in July.
No, it could be whenever, I said July, but it could be whenever.
We're not meeting in August. Well, um could we do a Saturday morning? Could we do potentially July the fifteenth, that Saturday morning at ten A M? Do we have anything on the schedule that day?
There is a hall rental at one P M.
Okay, with, well, okay, that doesn't give us enough time to clean up afterwards. Okay, what about the twenty-second? Yes, that's July, Saturday, July twenty-second.
The calendar is open.
Yes. What about July, Saturday, July eighth?
There's a rental at eleven A M. The room is open.
Okay, so it's tentatively scheduled July twenty-ninth at ten A M at the Town Hall Building, right here. Okay, any other questions regarding the Active Shooter Training? Comments? Okay, uh this, the time is now nine fifty-one.
One question. What is the official start and end time for the meeting for the sake of? People's personal time.
Uh for which meeting, Councilmember McDonald?
No, for this meeting, what's the, another start times at seven thirty?
You're talking about the, the town work session meeting?
Yes.
What is the end?
When is the official end time? That's what I'm asking.
Oh, the meeting ends when we move through the business on the agenda. No, there's not. But the time is now nine fifty-two and this meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.